Okay, first off, we're looking for an adoption of the minutes of the August 13 meeting. I move by councillor Mav, seconded by councillor Thompson. Oh, you've got to speak to it councillor? Councillor Thompson?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, this is not, uh, I'll move the minutes. And this is not directly related to the minutes, but, um, I'm concerned about the something that I brought up, uh, actually several months ago, uh, regarding the property at 9178 Tapestry. Uh, you saw the, uh, elevation of the house was, uh, a concern to the neighboring property. Uh, the driveway which was put in after that, uh, is, uh, two feet, uh, right up on the property line, uh, a disaster, in my opinion. And I think that, um, I think we pride ourselves on, uh, on service to the community. And in my opinion, uh, this has been going on and I, I've tried to, uh, stay out of bringing the council into this at the meetings, uh, but it has not gone well in the last several months. And I've been in communication with the, uh, property owners who, uh, are subjected to this, uh, situation and, uh, they have not been happy. And, uh, recently there was a letter sent out, uh, with respect, uh, to the situation. And all I wanted to do was get it resolved, uh, have the people satisfied and happy and, uh, resolve a very bad situation that certainly would, uh, affect them even if they wanted to, uh, sell their home. The, uh, motion that was made at the time was to see if staff can resolve it and report back to council. Uh, it's been at least two or three months now and, uh, there was, uh, solutions being, uh, suggested that, uh, the, uh, are not in favor of, but you're not in favor. Yeah. Anyway, um, I think the initial problem with this situation was that they bought the property. Somebody built a house next door, uh, which was, uh, not a regular builder, somebody who was doing it, uh, on the side, elevated the house substantially above, uh, with the foundation. Uh, when, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Jenicor, uh, were ready to build, they called, uh, the city and said, "I think we have a problem here. We don't want to have a drainage problem. We don't want to adversely affect our property. Uh, would you please come and check and see what we can do?" Went out, inspected the property and, uh, came back after consultation at City Hall and, uh, suggested they go ahead as-is. That was a crucial mistake, not the driveway, in my opinion. The crucial mistake was made at that point. There should have been a hold on everything and they should have, uh, made sure that the elevations were changed or, uh, a new plan was put forward. Anyway, uh, now this has come down to a situation where the neighbor next door is being suggested to go to the Committee of Adjustment to get approval for your driveway, uh, and, uh, that should resolve the problem, uh, as far as the neighbor is concerned. Certainly the Jenicors could, uh, object to that and, uh, the Committee of Adjustment would have to make the decision. There was a, uh, working relationship with Bob Bollbrook, uh, when he was here and they were very satisfied with that. And they were working towards getting a resolution of the situation where they would landscape that, uh, wall properly so it wasn't, uh, an ugly mess and it wasn't a safety hazard. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, didn't materialize because, uh, people above Mr. Bollbrook decided that wasn't appropriate and they weren't going to do that. Now, I have correspondence here that suggests that, uh, they, the city doesn't, uh, pay for any changes on private property. Well, uh, if, uh, you make the initial mistake, uh, and you go to court, I, you're going to pay one way or the other. Uh, then, uh, in the letter that I have here, it suggests that, uh, in spite of all of that, we're willing to, uh, pay the sum of $4,000 to rectify the problem, uh, if you make your decision within 10 days and it's sent out, uh, already three or four days before it gets to them and puts them on the spot. Now, I don't know whether they want to speak tonight about this or whether, uh, the easy thing would be to defer it to staff to meet with them to see if we can come to some satisfactory resolution. It's been going on and on and on and this was the, uh, the culmination of all of that where, uh, they are given a specific time limit and an amount and I think that's, uh, unsatisfactory. Uh, it's not a good service to the community and I think that these people have a really legitimate complaint, uh, about how this whole issue, uh, has been handled. So, um, did you want to speak at all?
Why don't we, uh, councillor Thompson, why don't we maybe get the CAO maybe to weigh in on this and see how we can, uh, grab hold of it?
Well, I think he was probably one of the ones who decided that this, uh, wasn't, uh, the, the way I suggested it should be. Uh, this is, uh, have you been involved in this?
Just, just at, at the very end and, uh, with the, uh, the, I guess the culmination of, of where we're headed. We had several discussions at this, at, uh, during our staff meetings. Uh, it got to the point where, uh, we had made a decision about a week or so ago. Uh, the clerk and solicitor and I met, uh, felt it was better we put out an offer to the Jenicors. Uh, in all fairness to us, we believe that the amount, uh, that was quoted in the letter was the amount that Mr. Bollbrook had suggested would do the repairs. Come to our attention that maybe that amount is not correct. So, uh, we prefer, if you want, it's just to refer it back to us and I think we can resolve this over the next week or two.
That's what we wanted to do three months ago. Anyway, uh, Mr. Iainoni has been extremely helpful in, in keeping me informed and, um, I think, uh, he has been kept out of the loop a little bit. I asked him if, uh, he had read this letter and, uh, if he had a copy of it and he said, "No, I haven't seen it." So...
Well, I think in fairness, the, the letter, uh, that went out from the solicitor was a culmination of a meeting that the clerk and solicitor and I had late last week. Uh, he may not have been copied out, but certainly was, uh, in that meeting and ultimately we, uh, ended up, uh, sending this letter out trying to resolve it.
Anyway, I, I apologize for, uh, but they, uh, Jenicors felt that they had the opportunity to speak at this particular meeting. That didn't materialize. Uh, so if, uh, if we can just refer this to staff to work with them, try to find, that's all we wanted in the first place and, uh, they want to, uh, have something that, uh, isn't a safety hazard and isn't an eyesore and isn't going to deter from the value of their home. So, uh, I would so move.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo that we refer this to staff for, for, uh, quick resolution. Uh, if there's no other comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, thank you very much.
We can get a vote on the minutes?
Um, yeah, we're going to do that now. Okay. Okay, uh, moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Mav that we move the minutes from the August 13 meeting. Any discussion of that? No? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, that's, uh, unanimous. Uh, moving down the agenda, disclosures of pecuniary interest. Are there any disclosures for tonight's meeting? Uh, councillor Morocco?
Actually, your, uh, worship, I'm going to declare a conflict on F 2013 dash 46. It's 2013 reimbursement mileage at vote.
Okay. Got that one on the mileage increase. Okay, if there's none other, then we'll move on to our first report, CAO 2013 oh five, municipal contribution agreement between the city and OLG. And, uh, I'll ask our CAO if he'd like to lead us in that one.
Mr. Mayor, you recall the last council meeting? Uh, we presented the agreement to council and that was the OLG, uh, agreement for, uh, municipal contribution agreement. Uh, in there we had some estimates as to what that would mean for the city. Uh, we had, when we first received the document, had, uh, a number of questions and we had communicated with the OLG. Uh, I think we had something like 25 questions that were asked of them and they provided us responses. Those were included in the package for council to review. Um, through that dialogue, uh, they've made it quite clear that the agreement, uh, is not amendable, that it's an agreement that has been put forth to all municipalities that are a party of, of OLG being in their community. Uh, I think approximately 20, a little over 20 of them have signed the agreement already. Uh, but they said it's not amendable. They're quite happy to provide clarification like they've done through the answers to the questions, uh, but there's no, uh, sort of back and forth dialogue that would take place that would lead to any amendments to this. So, in other words, this is the agreement and it's front of council and, uh, we have the ability tonight to approve it. So, just to highlight a couple of things that are in the report, uh, that, uh, were, were issues at the time and we should make this very clear to the, uh, members of the public, but one is the termination clause. Uh, and there's a couple of things in there that indicate how this agreement can terminate and that is one, is that if the casinos no longer operate within our community. Uh, the second part would be that if the OLG and the Ontario government is completely out of gaming, uh, or three, they can give us 30 days' notice. So, there's really no term to this agreement, but there is a, a possibility of a very short, uh, exit from it with 30 days' notice. There's some other provisions there that basically say that that funding would take us to the end of that current year. So, there is no long-term, uh, commitment. The current agreement that we have that provides us $3 million, uh, currently provides funding out to 2020 and every year thereafter, as long as the casinos, uh, continue to exist within our community. Uh, so council has to be aware of that. The second part, uh, is successor rights, uh, and the municipal contribution agreement is between us and the OLG. And, and just to make it clear, this is not an agreement that involves other municipalities or the region. It's, it's an agreement that is between us and OLG. And I think in the package, uh, we talked a little bit about, or talked about the last meeting, currently there's about a $4.3 million contribution from the OLG, uh, to the Niagara region, uh, that funds the casino unit of the Niagara regional police. OLG have put us, us on notice and have put the region on notice that with the funds under this new agreement flowing to us, those funds will cease coming from OLG to the police and the police will have to come directly to us to receive any future funding. We've already had one meeting, uh, the mayor and I and, uh, Mr. Harrison were at a meeting with representatives from the Niagara regional, uh, board, uh, of commissioners and, and the chief. Uh, we have asked them for a lot of detailed information on the casino unit and the number of police officers, their hours, um, five-year budget cycles, uh, actual expenditures and they're in the process of getting that information to us. And when we receive that information, we'll be reporting further back to council on that issue. Uh, the third part of the agreement that I just want to bring to your attention is something that was not in our existing agreement as well and it's called a community recognition program. And if you read that, those clauses, it's, it's pretty evident that what the OLG is looking for is, uh, although they say that the monies can be used at the discretion of council, uh, they are, in reading the clauses, looking for, uh, in our opinion, uh, capital projects that will bring some sort of, uh, promotional or, uh, value to the OLG, something that they can come and have recognition that they were part of that, whether it be infrastructure projects or, uh, pathways or parks or whatever it may be. So, um, even though they say that the money is at the discretion of council, it's quite evident, uh, from us reading the agreement, uh, that that would be towards, uh, capital infrastructure and capital investment in the community that would be for the benefit of the entire community. So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight those couple of things that are, are different than the existing agreement. Again, our, uh, and I know council wants to have that discussion to a later date, but we really won't have a true understanding of what the final numbers are, uh, through the new agreement until we get through one whole year. And their calendar year is April 1st to, uh, March 31st. So, we, uh, we really won't have a reconciliation of those funds during the first year until probably sometime in April of next year. Uh, so, right now they're just guestimates as to what this, uh, dollar amount may, may bring us. A couple of things that we did that was, uh, that is unique to Niagara Falls and it was a, I, I believe, a, a real benefit to Niagara Falls when we had our meetings with OLG. One is that we wanted to ensure that table games were included, uh, and a lot of the other municipalities where obviously they don't have table games. In the first draft that we saw, that was not included and we ensured, uh, through our dialogue with them that we wanted to have the 4% on live table games added to the agreement, which will mean additional revenues. And we wanted to ensure that when the calculation was done, that we have two zones in the city. One is Casino Niagara and one is Falls View. And we wanted to make sure that those calculations were done separately so that we could attract five and a quarter percent, uh, on the first 65 million at each location rather than having it on one location or, or having that lump. So, again, that'll probably mean an additional million or $2 million over the course of the year on the way that that's calculated as well. So, you know, even though we're not getting everything we wanted out of this, there was a couple of things that we went to the table and asked for, uh, and we did get through the agreement, the table games and the splitting of the revenue calculation, which again will, in our opinion, add a couple more million dollars to the, to the pot at the end of the day. Uh, so our recommendation here is that, uh, council go ahead and, um, authorize the agreement. Uh, you noticed in the correspondence that we had until the end of September, uh, if we don't approve the agreement by the end of the Sep, end of September, uh, the old agreement stays in place and we forego the new agreement. And, uh, our recommendation is that we, uh, approve that tonight and get the agreement ratified before the end of September.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. We've got councillors Kerrio, Morocco, Thompson and Iainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question about the policing. Is the policing contribution a decision that's going to be made by this council? The amount, the policing, is that something that this council is going to decide on or is that something that the OLG is going to tell us we have to do and could you, could you expand a little bit on how that's going to go?
What the OLG has told us is that, uh, over the last number of years, they have been providing direct funding to the Niagara regional police or through the region to Niagara regional police. Their position is they're out of it, uh, and it's in our court. They don't care if we fund it. That's totally up to us. It's totally at our discretion. The agreement that we have is between us and OLG and if we are to see that funding continue, that will be a, completely a decision of this council. So...
So, the discussion you're having with the police are to come up with an agreement that we're going to sign with the police?
Yeah, we, we want to come back. What, what our first step with the police was is that, um, we wanted to do a fact-finding mission. We wanted to find out what policing levels were prior to the casino coming in, what they are now, what your five-year budgets are, what your capital expenditures are. We wanted to get that information to find out what level of service we're getting. We are going to be getting that information soon. We then would like to come back to you as a council and have a discussion on which way we'd like to head with this because, uh, once we see the facts and council has the facts in front of them, there's just some decisions that, uh, certainly this council has to make.
Okay.
But, um, at this point in time, we've made no commitments to the police. Uh, as I say, the mayor and myself and the treasurer, I think that was, uh, Mr. Harrison, I think the three of us were in the meeting. Uh, we made it very clear to them that we were not looking at, uh, long-term agreements or anything of that nature. We were sort of putting it in the realm of, we're, we're almost, we're almost looking at this almost like a fee-for-service type arrangement. So, what are you going to provide us that we're not getting, that we are, are going to buy or not buy from you? So, again, it would, it would be a, a decision of council to say, "Well, this is the service they're offering us, the extra level of service and is it something the council wants to continue to fund? Or are you happy with the existing policing, uh, without that so-called casino unit?" So, this is certainly a debate we're going to have to have around the council, but we didn't want to bring it forward to you until we had all the facts that we could present to you.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, um, the other municipalities, the other host municipalities have had this agreement in place? Am I right?
Yes, there, there was, if I can kind of put it in perspective for you, uh, early on, when, when gaming started, uh, Windsor and Niagara Falls were the, were the frontrunners. And Windsor and Niagara Falls had the agreement that Niagara Falls, that we have now. It was, it was a fixed amount, uh, and it didn't include the kind of sharing that, uh, the, uh, the percentage sharing that you see in, in this new agreement. When the racinos or the slot kind of combinations came in, that agreement was very similar to the agreement you're seeing today. When the whole modernization came out, that existing agreement was amended and included some other clauses and that's what the new agree, that's what the, the other municipalities are now signing. But I will say this, that that agreement is very similar to the agreement that many of them had before. A lot of, even the termination clauses are very similar to the agreements that were entered into for, um, those slot kind of operations.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think it's a good agreement for the municipality. I don't like the fact that they can cancel it on, on any notice, um, but I don't think that that's their intention. Um, it's in the agreement. I trust that this agreement will live through the course of the agreement that we have now with the casinos, the way they exist today. I have no reason to suspect that there's any other reason, that the government's trying to pull any type of fast one. I appreciate this agreement. I appreciate that the premier has given us this, uh, agreement. Uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Mayor, when you, uh, get up to speak, you'll, you'll maybe give the audience, um, uh, some background as to how we got here because this is on everybody's mind in our community. You know, uh, it seems to be a big windfall to the municipality. So, everyone's asking what we're going to do with the money, uh, how we got here. You may want to elaborate a little bit on that because there are a lot of people that don't know. I think it's a good agreement. I'm obviously going to support the agreement and I thank those, yourself and the staff that have worked hard to get this agreement in place and also the premier and the people from OLG who've seemed fit to come up with this agreement. That takes us from a few million dollars to almost 18 or 20 million dollars. I think it's a fabulous agreement and I'm prepared to support it and make the motion when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you councillor. We've got councillor Morocco.
Uh, your worship, thank you very much. I have to say that I want to, uh, councillor Kerrio echoed pretty much what I would like to have said. I actually was a little standoffish at the very beginning because of some of the clauses that were in there, but I have to say I want to also, uh, recommend, uh, commend staff for, and yourself for going out and pursuing to see if there was any opportunity to, uh, further, uh, increase our revenue source from there. But, um, of course, we met with, uh, our minister of finance, Charles Sousa, in, uh, at AMO in Ottawa and, uh, it was a little bit more comforting to hear from him too. We talked about the cancellation and the clause and everything too. So, I have to say, after, after that, uh, conversation, uh, I'm feeling very comfortable, uh, with, uh, with the agreement how it is and I will support and I'll be glad to second that motion.
What did he say? Do you mind telling us what he said?
Um, well, yeah, we can. Did you want to do that at this point?
While we go around the table?
Yeah. We'll give a quick summary, yeah, because we're going to give you an update on AMO. We've got a whole bunch of updates there. Did you want, we'll tell you what, maybe, uh, because we did meet with councillor Morocco and our CAO and myself, we met with the ministry of finance staff. Uh, we also had met with, um, Minister Sousa and this was one of our topics. So, did you want to just give a quick overview?
Well, yeah, I think the councillor Morocco's, uh, comments is that really what the minister was saying is that Niagara Falls is a cornerstone of their gaming, uh, strategy. And, you know, he wouldn't foresee a scenario where those two resort casinos were not part of the gaming picture in the province. So, there would not be that kind of uncertainty that all of a sudden that would disappear. And he didn't see a scenario where they would turn their back, uh, on those partners that, that have been participating. So, he, he was very, uh, very upfront with us. He was very eloquent in it and, and I think it gave us some comfort that, yeah, we are, uh, you know, the, the cornerstone. We are the, the jewel in their, their gaming strategy in terms of having the two largest casinos, uh, in the province and still generating a good sum of revenue for them, uh, on an annual basis. So, uh, that was a response we got from them at that meeting and it was, it was somewhat comforting. Uh, councillor Morocco and I were, were very pleased to hear, uh, hear those kind of comments as well as, as the mayor.
Yeah. And, uh, the other thing, um, of interest, he said, you know, when we originally met with the, uh, uh, the OLG, we said, you know, we didn't like these certain things in the, in the contract and they said, "This is the agreement we have for every other municipality that they've already signed. So, we're not going to give you a one-off. They're all going to be the same or you can stick with your old deal." You got to the end of the month. So, we, you know, we get it. Uh, next up councillor Thompson, then Iainoni, Gates and Mav.
Um, sounds like the Jenicor deal that we're talking, you've got 10 days to make a decision. Anyway, um, the, uh, Windsor, do, do they, have they signed yet?
I, I don't know and, and I apologize because I was going to co, contact them today to find out. Uh, I know that the agreement that they were dealing with was the exact same agreement and they would be giving up their old agreement as well.
Yes, I understand that, but, uh, did they, were they responsible for the police costs also?
In Windsor, it's single-tier, so, yes, they were. Uh, they are, uh, the money that was taken into the city of Windsor, uh, I believe they, they allocated about two and a half, two and a half or 2.8 million roughly of the amount they got, um, over to, uh, police. Now, you have to remember in Windsor, um, until recently, they had their 3 million on the casino and they also had a race, uh, slot operation. So, I think they were getting around five or five and a half million. When the slots disappeared, they were in the same boat we were, that they were back down to $3 million. But when they were getting the slot money in, uh, their CAO and I had a couple of really good conversations over the last couple of months, uh, and they're facing the same dilemma as we are as to how they're going to continue funding, not only for, uh, the police, but there was an issue there with funding of their BIA as well. So, that was all coming out of the one pot because they were a single-tier government in, in Windsor.
Their, their initial one, the same as ours, was, uh, 2.6 and we negotiated ours 3 million after 10 years and they got the same thing because of their, uh, First Nations Clause. Um, anyway...
Favorite Nations Clause.
Favorite Nations Clause. Uh, the, uh, the, the, the good part of this is, uh, we're responsible here for the policing costs and, uh, I'm glad, uh, my question was the same as councillor Kerrio. Are we obligated? Do we have, uh, we have to provide the same funding? Uh, so this is all up to us on what we want to negotiate. So, I'm extremely pleased about that because I think there's a tremendous opportunity to, uh, look at what the policing has done in that area and, uh, make sure that a lot of the, uh, time expended, uh, is for casino issues and not for, uh, other issues which, uh, is brought to my attention on a regular basis. So, uh, we'll have to really be astute and, uh, hopefully the council will be, uh, informed totally on what happens with respect to that. But, uh, the agreement, uh, in spite of the 30 days, I'm not concerned that this is a, a scheme to try to, uh, circumvent, uh, the opportunity for municipalities, particularly Niagara Falls, to, uh, have casino gaming. So, uh, the great opportunity to, uh, have some funding for issues that we vitally need within the municipalities. I also will support the agreement.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Iainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We briefly touched on the police issue and I, I just wanted to say, i- if Windsor is dealing directly with the police or police in regards to paying for their policing, and I've had my share of controversy with the police service board years ago, I just want to say, I don't want to sit on a council where we act as a quasi-police service board to fund a department of a police department. We, we don't, none of us are even qualified to do that. So, I, just makes me a little nervous to see that we'd have to come up with some agreement where the police serve, I mean, forever, every year their, their budget skyrockets and skyrockets. Maybe an information or a learning curve onto how much the budget at the casino patrol unit has skyrocketed, where they started, how they got here from now, some, something for us that gives us a history of that because if it stays status quo, then this council's going to be dealing with a police budget and that's not something we really want to get into.
Hey councillor, those are, those are very good, those are very, those are very good points and...
I'm on the first commission, so I don't want to point me, I don't have a...
The, the points you're making are very, very valid because those are some of the points that we raised with them. You know, where has this gone over that period of time? What are your, what are your, uh, what are your incident reports? Uh, what are your levels? Have they increased? Give us the stats. We need to then bring that back to you as a council and say, "Okay, here's all the stats. Here's where the funding's been. Here's where they still want to go." I think they were actually suggesting even at our meeting that it would be more than 4.3 that they'd be looking for. So, we need to bring all that back and have a really good discussion around this table as we want to.
And a 15-year deal.
And a 15-year deal at 4.3. Okay. Um, and, and I'm not, I'm one of those that believe the police, that, that the casino patrol unit should be there. I mean, if you did a, a hazard identification risk assessment of down there, you're, you're going to find that, that it should be there. But where does that put us in regards to council? Councillor Thompson has sat on the police service board. I don't know who else here has done so, if they have, but it's going to be a new responsibility for us and something that's going to be a learning curve. So, I really think that's, that's a crucial part of that. And as for the... And as for the termination agreement, I'm going to hold my nose and vote for this contract, because I think we're damned if we're due, we're damned if I don't. And that's huge money to throw. And I've, and you all know, I have struggled with this. I really worry about that. I really worry, in a province that has no money, is this too good to be true? And when you listen to Catherine, when yesterday on the news, kind of given some sort of a hint that there might be a fall election, that makes me nervous. But it's a lot of money and it's a gamble.
Thank you. Councillor Gates?
Probably why we're in the casino business, just a bit of a gamble. Yeah, just a couple of things on this. So we're clear, and I know a lot of my fellow councillors have talked on the policing, and I'll get to that. So we're clear today. We're going to, we have three million dollars. The province pays the policing, which is 4.3. And that takes the province's share to 7.3. I mean, that's kind of where we're at today, if we continue to go forward. I'd like somebody to clarify on page three of our report, number two. It says, there's a, it talks about a number of things, but the last sentence says, however, the day-to-day operations is already operated by a third-party service provider. Can somebody clarify that particular sentence? Not necessarily just for myself, but I think for the residents at home. I think, because we hear a lot about privatizing casinos and all that kind of stuff. And I think it'd be fair to let the residents know exactly what that means.
So if I could just put it in, try to keep it as simple as possible. We have two casinos in our municipality. Casino Niagara is a facility that is rented by OLG. So they're a tenant. They have another casino, Falls View, which is owned by them. The property is owned by them, so they're the owner. In both facilities, OLG has a management company that runs that casino on their behalf. That management company takes a fee and are paid for running that casino. And the remainder of the net profits, if you will, are then turned over to the province. So they already have a private sector management company in both facilities. It's the same company running that casino operation on their behalf.
Okay. I think that's important to know for particularly the residents, because you hear a lot about privatizing the gaming industry. The other thing is that I've heard a lot about the thirty-day. I'm actually not as concerned about the thirty-day as, you know, as I've gone through the entire package. I take a look, and it says that all the funds can be spent at a sole discretion of council. With the OLG, we'll have input into how the funds are allocated. I take a look at the thirty-day rule, quite frankly, as probably to have some form of control on a maverick council or a maverick mayor. I won't mention any names. I don't think that might be fair. But I know a lot of people that drive Fords. So I think, I think that particular, that particular issue, I understand why the province did it when I took a look through it. And when I take a look at, again, on page three, number five, it talks about OLG plan to use examples of local community benefits realized from receiving the funds in future communications, such as in content for advertising, examples in speeches, et cetera. I look at that, I believe that you see that almost every day. Not every day, but certainly a lot during the playoffs this year, what the conservatives done on their action plan. You know, if you go down the highway and you see the big notice, "Action Plan, Action Plan, Jobs", well, I think this is very similar, that they're, they want that same type of recognition within the province. So I understand exactly why they're doing that. And obviously, at those same functions, I would think either a member of council or our mayor would be at the, be there, there to speak as well, on behalf of the council and the city of Niagara Falls. So I'm not as concerned about the thirty days. I'm not concerned about have to give the provincial government, whoever it may be, on a go-forward basis, the recognition. It is a lot of money. I agree with councillor Kerrio. It's really been the talk of the community over the last little while since this has been brought forward. I don't think any of us can go anywhere without asking, what are you going to do with it? How's that going to come down? So I think it's, I think I'm certainly going to support it. On the policing part of it, and I can appreciate the concerns from the councils, but the reality is, at the end of the day, the policing, this isn't new. This has been going on for fifteen years with the policing. And I think there's got to be some documentation, a track record on exactly how the policing's been handled. Absolutely, do costs usually go up when it comes to policing? We're all familiar with that, just like firefighters go up, teachers go up. They're going to go up. But on the policing side, I think it's got to be looked at as a partnership. We have to sit down with the Police Services Board, maybe with the police representative, as well as the city, and say, okay, where do we go from here? I agree with councillor Ainoni on saying that maybe we could have a training session for the council on exactly the policing. Or maybe Wayne could, councillor Thompson could teach it, seeing he's sat there. But at the end of the day, I think, I think we have to look at the policing, you know, to respect it right across the, everywhere you go, police officer, respect it. I think we have to show them the respect and work with them on a go-forward basis. And I think that will be the best way to say to the police, we want a partnership with you. We want to sit down with you. We want to meet with you, discuss all the issues and go from there. And I think the policing will take care of itself at the end of the day. I don't, I'm no expert in policing, but I know that they have a lot of incredible workers in the police force that would love to work for the city, work with our, work with our mayor, work with our staff. So I'm not concerned about the policing either. I think we'll do a good job there. Obviously, cost is going to go up, and we have to watch that, depending on the revenues go. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to congratulate our mayor, our staff. When they got this, I don't care who you are, everybody just looked at it as that we just, you know, won the lottery type thing. You guys did a really good job in saying, oh, this, let's take a look at it. Let's read the fine print. Let's see where it is. I've been here a while now, and I tell you, one word can change the whole makeup of a paragraph or a sentence or a meaning. I think you guys have done an incredible job on getting the questions that I believe this council needed answered. And I'd like to commend you on a job well done. And I certainly will be supporting that we proceed with this. Tori, sit down. And I know I talked a little long. On this particular issue, are we, are we going to vote on both of these? One, on not doing anything with the money for a year? Or are we going to do them separately? I prefer to do them separately, but.
Well, Mr. Mayor, our view tonight was that we would pass the agreement. And then, my understanding is, once the agreement's passed, council then wanted to have a discussion on money. And we could bring that back at the next meeting or sometime in the fall, or, you know, whenever you'd like. But our intention tonight was.
Just the agreement.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We've got councillor Maves, Peter Angelo and Kerrio.
Yeah, your worship, I like the agreement, too. And I think everybody's covered everything. The only thing I'm concerned about, and of course, I think every one of us around the table have had someone come up to them and say, they want a refund on their taxes, but that's not going to happen with this. Anyway, just the community recognition program, I just want to, does every set have to be accounted for, number one? Is it just a matter of us putting signs on projects? Or is it permanent or temporary recognition they require? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we raised with them is, how do we move forward with that? I think it'd be their intention that once the agreement gets signed, they'll probably want to sit down with us and formulate sort of terms of reference as to how we run that community recognition program. I'm not sure they're going to be looking for right down to a penny allocation, but they're going to want to have some kind of strategy where we've identified projects. They will then identify projects that they want to have ribbon cuttings and be a part of, or have plaques or whatever. So those details will be worked out, but only after we agree to this. And we'll sit down with their staff. And we'll bring something back to council, probably in the next couple of months on that as well.
Can we assume, like, for instance, I noticed on the highway sometimes they'll have a sign that this project is funded by so-and-so. We'll have to do that same signage? If there's a sewer going in or sidewalks, funded by the OLG?
I'm guessing.
Is that how we're going to do that?
I'm guessing that as, you know, our construction signs that we have, they'll have their logo and partially funded by those kind of things. That'll be in the details. And probably their communications people will work with us to determine what kind of messaging needs to get out there. But as I say, I think we can bring those details back to you, probably in the next couple of months, as to the specifics of that program.
They mentioned in the program, too, that I guess, on page six, it says, I guess, the fifteen-day notice or something. It's just probably a slap on the hands if we don't pay attention. In the event the municipality does not comply, they may thereafter require the municipality to submit all proposed advertising and marketing materials. So if we're not doing it right, they're going to, they're going to come after us.
And that would be in the details of the agreement. And we'd certainly, and we've had some initial discussions with their communications people at OLG, who we actually, we actually are in contact with quite a bit. And they've indicated that they'll be having this conversation in probably thirty municipalities. So there'll, I'm sure, be some kind of template and things.
We can assume we'll get some guidance from them as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Peter Angelo, and then Kerrio.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I guess first, I'd like to say congratulations both to yourself and our CAO and other city staff on a job well done. I mean, financial implications for the city, if we, as Mr. Harrison always said, we're in a good position before. I think that this can do nothing but put us in a great position. I'll definitely support the agreement. I would like to talk about the funding priorities. I know I spoke to you briefly after last meeting. But I don't want to get it mixed up with this motion here. So maybe after this motion passes.
Sure. Councillor Kerrio?
Just a quick one, your worship. I'm understanding by what our CEO was saying, that council will have some input. I understand what councillor Ainoni was saying, that we don't have expertise in policing. But a lot of us do have expertise in contracts and negotiations. So that I'm assuming that the council will have some input after you do the fact-finding with the police, before we go with any position to the police. Is that correct? Yes?
It'd be our intention that, once we receive the information from the police, our staff will do some analysis. We're going to bring that information back and have dialogue around this table as to where you would like us to go or what direction we'd like to go.
Just want to make sure that we have a chance to put our positions forward before we make any decision.
On that issue, councillor, the main thing we made clear to them, number one, was, right now, we want to know accountability on every buck, right now. So show us what 4.3 gets, right now, the way it exists today. Secondly, let them know there would be no long-term agreement. We have a thirty-day cancellation. We said, you think you're going to get better than that? They were looking for ten or fifteen years. We said, you know, with any luck, you'll get thirty days, whatever we come up with. And the last thing we said is, our number is going to float, you know, depending on if what happens in Toronto or Markham or Vaughan. That will affect how much revenue that we get. And we said, and we believe that should be tied to whatever we agree to you guys. So if we take a dip, we think it should be all the way around.
Exactly where I was going. It has to be tied to our income.
Yes, that's, that was our thing. So we said, we know it'll be hard for you to budget a floating number, but that's, we're going to be dealing with it. So anyway, we just made it clear, this isn't a lottery win. Okay. Councillor Kerrio. Second of my councillor Morocco, that we move the recommendations one and two of the report. Yes, councillor Wayne?
I just have a couple of questions about the policing money. The CAO said with the new agreement, the funds will cease. And on page four of the report, it says, should council execute the new agreement, the existing agreement will disappear, along with the guarantee of three million to the city and the NRP funding of 4.3 million from OLG ceasing. If we don't sign on to the new agreement and we stay with the old one, will that 4.3 million not disappear in that case? You know, I just, every time I look at this, I.
That's actually, that's actually a good point. Our position on it would be, if we decided to stick with the old agreement and keep the three million, we would basically say to the police, we're staying with the old agreement. I don't know where you're going to get your 4.3, because we're still under a previous funding agreement. Go back and talk to the province or go back and talk to OLG. So, you know, because we certainly wouldn't, you know, it would make absolutely no sense for us to accept some other liability that we didn't have under the old agreement and keep the old agreement going.
Okay, it's still not totally clear. It's the wording that, you know, if we execute the new agreement, the existing one will disappear along with the R3 million and the NRP funding.
Well, maybe this might help. OLG did tell us that their agreement with the NRP has expired. And they've been going, paying it for the last couple of years without an agreement. Had they been complaining, saying they wanted to get out of this agreement for quite some time. They didn't feel it was necessary. You know, so what they've done now, they put the issue on our back. So they've given us the money and said, no, you deal with it. That's kind of the scenario we're in right now. But if we stick with the old agreement, there's no guarantee the police get anything. Only guarantee is we'll get the three million. But by going with the new agreement, what we know is that the NRP money for sure does, in fact, come to us for responsibility, if it's going to happen.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, if we keep with our existing three-million agreement, we are under absolutely no obligation to fund the 4.3 from, because we have no agreement with the Niagara Regional Police. Maybe that's the comfort you're looking for, but.
But there is no guarantee that the police would be able to find that 4.3 million elsewhere. So it looks like there's really no choice but to take the new agreement.
Okay. So we've got the motion by councillor Kerrio, second by councillor Morocco, for recommendations one and two. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, your worship. Just on page four in the document, in the second last paragraph, it says, "Further discussion by council of funding priorities can be undertaken once the document has been approved and staff has a full understanding of the amount to be received." And I actually wanted to bring it up last meeting, and I know I talked to you about it after the meeting. I talked to Mr. Todd as well and told him that I would bring it up this meeting. But I really think that we should be starting the discussion now, rather than later. And I'll give you my reasons why. I mean, I've heard pretty much everyone around the table speak about the fact that they want money to go into infrastructure. But I don't think anyone has been asked the question, are we talking about new infrastructure? Are we talking about existing infrastructure? My guess is that we're talking about existing infrastructure. But we've never, but we've never actually defined that. And then, when we say the word "infrastructure", it's a pretty, it's a pretty broad term. It can mean all kinds of things. So my biggest thing, and what I was explaining to you when we spoke, was that I really believe having the discussion now will help us to put a plan in place. Because if we wait until the springtime and then say, okay, we have X amount of dollars to spend, let's spend them now. I mean, when we're talking about certain infrastructure projects, such as sidewalk replacement, replacement of vehicles, ditching, things like that, yeah, those don't take a lot of lead time. We can just simply put out an RFP and we can accept the tender and we can go out and we can get the work done. But when we're talking about redesigning a park, when we're talking about doing underground work in terms of replacing water mains or, you know, sanitary or septic sewers, when we're talking about reconstructing roads, you can get into years of planning. And I think if we have that discussion in April, we're just going to be that much further behind. And I think our intentions are going to be that, once April comes and we reconcile the books, then we're going to want to have a plan to spend that money, starting in April of next year. We're not going to want to start the plan in April to spend that money and not get any money out the door in 2014. So that would be the first point that I'd like to make, your worship, is as to why we should have the discussion now. The second thing that I was going to mention would be the amount, your worship. And I know that staff keeps saying, well, you know, let us get a handle on what the exact amount is. I don't really, I don't really agree that, right now, the amount matters. I think what we should be doing is, we should be going out and we should be identifying a wealth of projects that we feel, or that our CAO feels, need to get done. And, your worship, I mean, the numbers are there. They're going to, you know, they're going to go up, they're going to go down a little bit. I mean, right now, we, you know, we keep saying, it's going to be anywhere from eighteen to twenty million dollars. Even if we back out the three million dollars from the OLG and the police, and the policing costs as they stand right now, we're still looking at the city receiving somewhere between eleven and thirteen million. So we know that if we want to dedicate, you know, most or even. So we know that if we wanna dedicate, you know, most or, or even all of that money to infrastructure, that we're at at least ten million dollars extra spending to infrastructure a year. So let's put a three to five year plan together, because, I mean, what we really need is we need projects sitting on the shelf that are ready to go. And once the money comes in, when, once we reconcile the books, then that would be the time to take those projects off the shelf and to fund them and then to get them out the door. And, your worship, I mean, I think that we should be making a motion, asking our C A O, asking our C A O to put a plan in place where if we're looking over a three to five year period, then that means that he would be coming back with a report that's identifying thirty to fifty million dollars worth of infrastructure work that can be done, that needs to be done in the city of Niagara Falls. And then we should be putting a plan in place to go out and get all the approvals to do that. The other advantage that we have, your worship, if we go out and we pre-approve a whole bunch of projects, is if we have another stimulus package come along, or if we have a P three program that comes along, um, and a P three program being that we get one-third dollars from the federal government, one-third dollars from the provincial government, and then we put in a third. Your worship, if we have fifteen, twenty million dollars in projects that are already approved, sitting on the shelf, and we only have to put one-third in, we'd be much smarter if we get those approvals in place now and then we just grab those projects and fund them and put them out the door. And I would make a motion, your worship, that our C A O come back with a report as soon as possible, identifying again, anywhere from thirty to fifty million dollars, so that we have a plan in place.
Okay, we've got a motion for Councilor Peter Angelo, do we have a second for that motion? Okay, we've got Councilor Gates. Um, so we'll maybe go to our C A O and ask if you'd like to address the...
Well, I, I think the, uh, the concept is, is very solid. We, we've been actually having some discussions at the senior management level around that , and Mr. Holman and I were talking today about just that thing. And, you know, we want to get to the point where, uh, we can identify those projects and maybe not, it might not be specific down to street by street, but even if you've got areas where you're saying, we're gonna spend so much on sidewalks, so much on, on asphalt overlay or whatever it may be, um, well, we need to get Mr. Holman, and Mr. Holman now is, his staff, uh, he's had some staff changes, uh, he's got some project managers now that, that are, are in place, some new hires, and what we need to do is get those projects designed and ready so that, that we can roll these projects out. And, uh, as I say, Mr. Holman and I had that conversation just this morning, uh, about how we wanna proceed with that. So we're happy to bring this report back. Uh, I'm guessing by the time we can pull this together, if you can give us, you know, maybe sometime around, you know, early November or something like that, or...
End of September's fine.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So early November would be great. No, it, it's gonna take us some time just to pull some of that information together because it'll be, uh, coming at us from a couple of different sources, but I think we can pull that together and give you some different options on how we can spend the money.
Yeah, your worship, I don't really think even that we need the whole report to come back at once. I mean, I think that we have things that are in the five-year capital plan that we can now move forward, knowing that those are the next projects that we wanna fund. Well, let's put them into the queue right now, let's go out and start the approval process. I mean, we know when we reconstruct a road that, and, you know, more often than not, we have to go through the E A process, we have to have public information sessions, you know, we, we have to design, then we have to go back to another public information session, then, then the, then the right design has to be approved in the E A, and only then, after we have all the approvals in place from the ministry and, and the E A document, can we then start the project or then even tender it out. So we have a lot of projects in the five-year capital plan. We can just simply bring those forward now and then we can start the approval process for that. That would be my comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've got, uh, Councilor Thompson, Maves, Carrio and Iainoni.
Well, I think we, uh, at the last meeting, we asked the C A O to come in with a, a plan and, uh, his feeling from a staff point of view with respect to the dollars that are gonna be spent, um, and there's many, obviously, everybody has had phone calls about where the public feels this money should be spent. Uh, infrastructure certainly, uh, the hospital has been mentioned, healthcare and many other, uh, uh, economic development, uh, tourism, all kinds of different areas, and I think the staff have to go back and come in with a plan, uh, that shows us all the opportunities and then let this, uh, council make the decision on where they think, uh, with public input, where they think that the, uh, dollars should be spent. Uh, and I appreciate the C A O suggesting that, uh, November, um, we don't know where we stand, uh, we have some, uh, real challenges, uh, I think with, uh, the, uh, Falls View Casino, that has to be overcome, uh, that's gonna impact, uh, our, our decision-making, so, um, I, uh, look forward to a good, solid plan, all-encompassing with all of the areas that are being suggested, uh, for spending. Uh, so, uh, nothing wrong with a plan and, uh, if you're talking about a plan, I have no problem with that, but I think it should be all-encompassing and it should take into consideration, uh, what our financial situation is gonna be, uh, at the end of this year for the coming year. So I think we've got a long way to go.
Okay, uh, Councilor Maves?
Yeah, your worship, uh, I agree with Councilor Peter Angelo, I think we should, uh, I can remember a few years back, we had a wish list, I think at one of the, probably a couple of years back, where we had the green light and the red light and, and things we really wanted and things possibly. I think we should dust that off again and earmark some of those important projects and maybe get those prioritized so that once we get, uh, everything that we have, we're assured of a certain amount of money, we can have that earmarked and ready to go. So I have to agree with Councilor Peter Angelo on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Carrio?
Thank you, worship. I agree with, uh, Counselor Thompson and Peter Angelo. I'd like to see a total strategy, uh, not just an infrastructure strategy, a total strategy, whether we're gonna do some debt reduction on an ongoing basis, whether we're gonna subsidize some of the increases. Uh, I think it would be a, a tough thing for this council to do after we had a, a windfall of ten or twelve million dollars to see the taxpayers of Niagara Falls, uh, pay more taxes this year. So I, I mean, that's something that we have to discuss, so that might be part of the strategy.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor, oh, Iainoni, then, uh, Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if we're looking through lists of things that we, that we have put off and that we've identified as a needful spending, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight transit and transit for the residents, not just the we go and the importance of, of a year and a half of public massive input telling us we need half-hour service and the only reason that we couldn't pass it in this council chamber was because of the dollars attached to it. So I'd like to see us do it slowly and methodically so that we know what we're spending our money on.
I wish I had a nickel every time someone stopped me in the community to tell me about how we should spend the money.
Yeah.
And that includes new facilities, uh, we need a center for this.
Walking trails.
Oh, yeah.
New skate park, I know we've, but we're all getting it everywhere that we go, so we have to, it, it, it's like winning the lottery.
That's right.
Watch people say, you know, they just cash spent like crazy. Well, we have things we've turned down, we've had things we've delayed, we've had massive public input on certain different projects and, and I don't think we're doing this blind. We have all that information before us anyway.
No, and I too, uh, like Councilor Peter Angelo's idea, because if you, if you aren't deliberate about your spending, you know, it's like you said, uh, Councilor Iainoni, the person wins a lottery and they go and buy the big car and the big boat, the big house, the big cottage, and then they can't afford to keep them and they end up three years later broke as they were before they won the lottery. So it's, their spending habits don't change and so they're just broke at a higher level, you know? My dad always said, if you make a million and you spend a million, you're still broke, right, right? So, anyway, uh, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. Um, I just wanted to say, I agree with Councilor Thompson and Councilor Carrio in the sense that council will still have to have the discussion of either a dollar amount or what percentage of the funding that we receive, we're gonna wanna place into infrastructure, um, whether it be economic development, I know Counselor Thompson mentioned tourism and the hospital. I'm not going there right now, that wasn't part of my discussion. My discussion is simply saying, everyone around the table has mentioned infrastructure, every single person around the table. So let's identify a wealth of projects and go out and have them approved so that once we do our reconciliation of how much money we're getting, we can actually get those projects out the door. My fear right now is that we're not gonna come to a consensus at this point in time, we're gonna wait too long, April's gonna come, our C A O is gonna stand up and tell us, you got eleven million dollars to spend, we're gonna say, okay, let's put X amount of dollars into infrastructure, there's not gonna be enough time to spend any of it in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, your worship, it happens, it happens every year. Five of our major projects that were supposed to be debentured last year didn't get out the door. I mean, it happens all the time, so unless we have a plan in place, unless we get all of our approvals in place, we're not gonna be spending that money on infrastructure. I agree that we need to spend money in other areas as well, and I think that that's a discussion that we're gonna have further down the road. I'm not saying to spend a certain amount on infrastructure, I'm saying let's get approvals for projects in place so that once we decide how much money we're gonna spend, we can just take those projects off the shelf and fund them.
Uh, Councilor Gates and then, uh, Maves and Morocco?
Well, first of all, thanks very much and I, I agree with, uh, uh, Councilor Peter Angelo. Uh, I believe you need a three-year, five-year plan, but I'm gonna go back, uh, not that long ago, uh, with the storm that we had, and we're still waiting for that report to come forward. And there may be some things from that storm and from that report that is gonna really dictate, uh, what we do. Uh, you know, I, you know, I'm not gonna name all the areas in the community that were hit hard, but we had some really, uh, tough, tough situations for the residents of Niagara Falls in big numbers. So, uh, I don't, I don't think we can forget the, the storm and, and that may dictate what we have to do immediately. But I take a look at, uh, having this conversation today, I don't think there is a decision that a council's made that's as important as this, probably since the casino came to Niagara Falls, on what you're gonna do, uh, on a go-forward basis. Uh, I mean, I think we need a, a very healthy debate and hopefully at the end of the day we'll figure out what we're gonna do, uh, that's gonna make, uh, the quality of life for the residents of Niagara Falls better. That's what it's about and how we get there, uh, I'm sure we're gonna do it collectively 'cause we've done that for the last three years. So I, I, but I wanted to use an example with, uh, Mr. Holman. And if you get the plan done early enough and soon enough, and I think Atlantis is the example I'm gonna use, uh, where we, we got that done and pushed forward, uh, a little quicker than originally we're gonna do, and we ended up saving, uh, thousands of dollars, uh, because we were able to get the, uh, the work done a little cheaper, uh, we were able to get the trades who weren't, uh, as busy at that point in time, so, uh, there's a lot of things that you can do when you have a little bit of money to save even more money. Uh, so I think that's something that we should be taking a look at too, uh, to say, uh, to Councilor, uh, Peter Angelo's point, uh, not only can we get it going, get it done as quick as possible, we can save probably, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars if we, uh, on getting more projects, so the money you save, you just re-invest, reinvest back into the community. Uh, so I, I like the, I like the idea of where, uh, where everybody's going on this and I look forward to seeing the, uh, the report, uh, and the report from, uh, the storm as well.
Okay, Councilor Maves?
Yeah, your worship too, as far as, uh, I'm at the Transportation Steering Committee meetings, uh, they're meeting every six weeks and of course, the region has a, uh, a move afoot to, uh, they're studying taking over transit for the entire region. Perhaps, uh, Mr. Dren could even mention something about that, uh, if he has any updates, how close we are. Like when I'm there, they seem to be, uh, I think they're, they've, they've had meetings with Niagara Falls, St. Catherine's and Welland, and I'm not exactly sure, uh, where it's at as far as Niagara Falls is concerned.
Mr. Dren?
Thank you, uh, your worship. With respect to the, the One Transit, as, as the region calls it, they're in the process of studying, um, whether they should go that way or not. They're also in the process of reviewing, they're in the middle of a pilot project and there's concerns with trying to move forward and they haven't even finished the pilot project. Um, and so I, you know, as far as direction, we don't have a direction yet as to, uh, or the region doesn't have a direction, uh, they're looking at everything from One Transit to making sort of the pilot where you have express connectors as a permanent thing, so they're looking at all those options, uh, so there's nothing really to report. There, I know that they're gonna go back to the committee of the whole, uh, shortly, probably in the next month or so, uh, with, with some, uh, strategies.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, part of the problem too is that, that obviously the smaller centers would like to see it, but I think everybody who has a permanent situation now, which is Niagara Falls, St. Catherine's and Welland, uh, it's pretty hard for us to put our equipment out there and, and it could be very hard to, to fund it, so I, as I, I think it's gonna be a long time before that's finalized.
To that point, yes, Councilor?
I had an opportunity to sit with the Chair of the Transportation Committee last week and we had a conversation at length about it, and we would have all received the invitation today from, um, C K T B, and C K T B is doing a town hall, end-of-the-line public transit, um, public meeting in Niagara on Tuesday, September seventeenth at the St. Catherine's Via Station, and it's being chaired by Debbie Zimmerman, who is the Chair of that committee. Um, they wanna look in-depth at the challenges and opportunities facing public transit across Niagara as well as linking into the G T H A. They're inviting all of us to attend, the panelists are, uh, M P Rick Dykstra, M P P Jim Bradley, um, Regional Counselor and Chair of the Transportation Strategy Committee, Debbie Zimmerman, and they're bringing all the communities together to talk about this and she and I had an opportunity to discuss that and what took place in Niagara Falls and how we had had the committee. So I'll definitely be attending this one and, and I, I encourage everybody to do so because, I mean, the message coming out of the region is there's no cooperation, so maybe we need to find out how we can do that. 'Cause transportation is a huge proponent to bringing new business, particularly a new university or a new college to a town.
Yep, definitely. Um, we've got Counselor, uh, Morocco?
I don't think, which is best about Paul Brown, I think everybody's been said about this morning, but, uh, anyway, I'm fine with what's been said, thank you very much.
Okay, so we've got a motion, uh, yes, Councilor Wayne?
Um, yes, just about what, uh, their, the O L G is looking for, um, if I understand, it's capital infrastructure that will benefit the entire community, I'm not sure debt reduction is something that we can do with that money, it'd be nice, but, uh, if my understanding's correct, it's, they're looking for capital spending that'll benefit the whole community. And one thing that I know benefits the whole community is separating our sewers, because then we're sending less rainwater to go through sewage treatment and with the drop in the volume that we're charged for, our sewer rates either go down or don't go up when, uh, they go up elsewhere. So I, you know, when I say infrastructure, I'm looking at, uh, things like our roads and our, our sewers, the real nuts and bolts that, uh, the community relies on, and, uh, in terms of projects, I can think of one right off the bat, uh, Ryle Street, uh, if we'd separated the sewers there, it would have diverted water from a large segment of that area to where it should go instead of into the, uh, down-to-the-waste treatment plant. So there's, there's a project right there that's been on the books for a while, we need to move on.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on this topic, we've got, uh, Counselor Peter Angelo made the motion, seconded by Counselor Gates, that we have staff come back with a report September, um, that, uh, maybe we start off in the middle, October, uh, twenty-second maybe, uh, yeah, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I, I, I just wanna be clear about this because I'm not asking for a report on, on how we divvy up the money. I'm asking for a report to come back that identifies infrastructure projects that we can get approvals for in place right now. I don't think that that's gonna take until November to do. I mean, again, we must have some, uh, foresight in terms of what capital infrastructure projects the city needs right now. And what I'm saying is let's identify those and let's start the approval process right now, because if we're gonna have any luck of getting them out the door in April, then we need to get our approvals in place. That's, I mean, that's, that's a world of difference from, you know, where we divvy up the money and where we put the money. I wanna have the projects approved and have them on the shelf, so that if council decides to fund them, then we take them off the shelf and we fund them and we get them out the door. I don't wanna be stuck in April with un, with un-approved projects that we can't get out the door, that's all.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think if, if that report, uh, is a much, uh, simpler report.
That's what I'm asking for.
And, uh, but we could probably have that back in, in the October, because as of tomorrow, we're actually finishing, uh, putting the agenda together for the twenty-fourth meeting, so, you know, we have to give Mr. Holman's staff some time to put that together. Um, and in fact, we have a council review tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, so, uh, tight timeframe there, but, uh, I agree, if you're looking for that bigger report on all of the strategies, that's something that's gonna take some time to put together. If we're just looking for a list to get some capital projects on the table and approved, uh, so that Mr. Holman's staff and others can, can start doing design work and planning that, uh, we could, we could probably have that for that first meeting in October.
So that'd be October the eighth and then further, uh, with a further report to come sometime after that, uh, with the rest, is that what you're suggesting or are you just asking for this?
Again, I, I didn't even address the, the funding priorities and, and where the money should be divvied up. That can come in a future report. The only report that I'm looking for is to identify some infrastructure projects and start the approval process now. That's all.
That's good.
And that's very important, because Mr. Holman will say in the report that you need that lead time, and the thing is, there's going to be dollars spent for that design. We're going to have to get engineering consultants and stuff on some of these bigger projects, and that's going to take some project money to get that design done. So in that report in October, we will be needing some preapproval to go out and get that design, which is going to incur spending dollars to get the design done, so.
I agree with you. Okay, so moved by Counselor Pierangelo, seconded by Counselor Gates, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Excellent. Okay, on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, your worship.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Peter, or Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Anoni, that we move the consent agenda. Anybody want anything pulled out of that? No? So everyone had a look at them all, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Oh, we're not quite there yet, Counselor Thompson. Jumped out of your favorite part of the meeting. So you never know how many, how much I've got to say, so you're not sure how much time you have. We'll start off with the serious stuff. We have some obituaries. Ruth Burchill, stepmother of Catherine Louis, of our Finance Department, passed away. Bill Rapp, former platoon chief, the Niagara Falls Fire Department. John Kurnahan, former Niagara Parks Commission General Manager. And Ann Hurlavage, mother of Alex Hurlavage, our Director of Planning and Development. And to all these, we give our sincere condolences. What's happened most recently, of course, our clerk, it was his birthday yesterday, so we'd like to wish him a happy birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Clerk. Sixty. Also, I spent the night in my car. No, this wasn't my wife kicking me out this time. This was No Fixed Address, which was a fundraiser for the YWCA, and my daughter stayed with me in the car that night. It was a great experience for them, and it was a great chance to raise some significant funds to help homelessness. And I have to tell you, not that we were in any way trying to mimic or think that we were living like homeless people, but you lose some liberties and you live, and actually we had some homeless people staying with us in their vehicles, that live in their cars. I was really quite surprised to meet them. And these are people, the one lady was a nurse at Joseph Brand Hospital, these are professionals, educated people, that because of circumstance end up like this. It's really quite sad, but it happens and it's real. And anyway, we're glad to be able to do that for the day, and also to the community of Niagara Falls. They stepped up and made a lot of donations into that. We want to say thank you to all the people that did donate. We, we did very, very well for the community. Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference, known as AMO, took place in Ottawa this summer. Counselor Morocco, along with our CAO, we were there, we were very effective, we met with ministers, we did some excellent networking, and I have to tell you, that's the best place to meet with these ministers and their staff, is in a social setting when they're relaxed, versus at Queens Park. And you have some real relaxed conversations, and you make a lot more leeway, it's a time well spent. Prince Charles Park reopened officially, we had the ribbon cutting, big success, what a great park. To see a splash pad now, to see a new liner in the pool, new roof in the poolhouse, accessible playground, widened accessible paths, all the community turned up, it was a hot day, it was really ni- nice to see. We spent a fair bit of money, and we had matching dollars from the federal government to do a real facelift in that park for the South End, which, which was really great. People real grateful for council for their support of their park. The first annual law enforcement torch ride for Special Olympics took place at Regency. Thank Counselor Gates for joining me, joining me there that day. Busker Fest took place this past weekend downtown. Had some real talented buskers show up, including one kid, he had performed for Oprah, he'd been on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. And what a neat, talented boy by the name of Gabriel from San Francisco, real talented 14-year-old boy, just some amazing talent downtown. Good to see big crowds as well. Chippewa Day, the first annual, they're, they're bringing them back, took place in the community last weekend, and that was neat to say, too, where you could float down the Chippewa Creek on a floaty, and all sorts of face painting and different events, and Counselor Anoni was there as well with their new puppy, and it was a nice, a nice event to see in, in the community. As well, SNAP Magazine Newspaper had a new brand launch, they're going to have a new approach to the way they market SNAP, and they're going to be more interactive and engaged in the community, where you can go on and vote for different pictures on their website, which is a real neat approach. A lot of people like to look at SNAP and see how many times their picture's in there. Thank you to council members who represented the city at different events. Counselor Pierangelo at the grand reopening of Epilepsy Niagara, and Counselor Anoni, the dedication of the new mural at the FH Leslie Pool. Up and coming events, we've got a few to mention. Rotary has their Lobster Fest this Friday, September, I'm sorry, next Fri- yeah, this Friday, September the 13th, at Club Italia. Tickets are $75 each, and you can get them from Dalton Lindsay of the Rotary Club, or call City Hall, we'll direct you to him. Grand Fondo, Niagara Falls will take place this Saturday morning, starting at 6:45. Going to have thousands of cyclists cycling right here in our community. I know our CAO is going to be doing part of the trek. He just did the big move for cancer this past weekend, he rode 100 kilometers. He said his bum's really sore. He was able to raise some nice funds for cancer research, which, which is really great. We're going to have Grand Fondo, you've got to understand, this is huge. This took place in, in Banff, it took place in Vancouver to Whistler, the Sea to Sky Highway. This is a very, very big event. The region, along with the police, along with all of our municipalities, were very hard, there's going to be a lot of road closings. Council, I'd just give you a heads up, for a few hours this Saturday morning, a number of roads will be closed, thousands of cyclists are going to go by. It's a small inconvenience for a very big, incredible event that's going to take place in our community. Myself, too, I'm going to be landlocked for the morning as well, but I will be participating in the race instead. So please get out, watch this, it'll be quite a sight to see. These people are coming from all over North America to participate, the Grand Fondo this Saturday morning, real exciting event. Parade of the Unknown Soldier takes place Sunday, September the 15th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Fairview Cemetery. The Terry Fox Run will be this Sunday at Oaks Park. Registration is 9:30. The Walk takes place at 11:00 a.m. this Sunday at Oaks Park. You can walk it, wheel it, run it, there's no entry fee, there's no minimum pledge. We ask everyone to participate and show your support and your spirit. This Sunday, we'll be there. This is a new event I want to announce here, the Mayor's Healthy Lunch, next Tuesday, September the 17th, from 11:30 till 1:30 at Oaks Park. We're going to have a healthy lunch. Last year, we did a fundraiser where we had mini putt tournament at the Jungleland on Clifton Hill. This time, we're going to do a healthy lunch. Camisoles is going to be heading it up and sponsoring it. First 200 people get these bootle bags worth about 100 bucks each. We're going to have demos for fitness, snacks, health ideas, we're going to have massaging taking place there. In case the weather's inclement next Tuesday, we'll go across the street to St. Andrew's, yes, you heard right, massages. You'll be there?
Is that a typical lunch?
Yes. Rain date, if, rain, it's, the, rain or fall, rain or shine, it will happen next Tuesday. If it does rain, we'll go across the street to St. Andrew's Church if it does. But regardless, all the events will take place, it's going to be fun, and this will be the kickoff for the United Way for this year. Tickets will be $20 each, that includes your, your lunch, that includes beverage, that includes your bootle bag, and that's going to include a lot of other fun surprises like the massages. Niagara Falls Review, United Way, and the Mayor's Office are working together on this. Night of Art takes place, Lundys Lane Museum, next Thursday, September the 19th, 5:00 p.m. It's free. It's visual, dramatic, literary, art, music, dancing, kids' activities, arts, everything. Everything is free that day at the museum, don't miss it. Soapbox Derby is coming back to Niagara Falls, Saturday the 21st. It's going to be a two-part for the Harvest Fest at Fireman's Park. Anyone interested in participating or being a part of the Soapbox Derby should contact harvestfest@scvfa.ca for details. And just two, two other points here. Craft Hockey Lives On is brought to us by Sobies. If you remember, we had Sobies here in this chamber, they won the contest with their big displays for craft. They decided to give the money back to the community by way of a free community event. That'll be Sunday, September the 22nd. It'll be a free event from 1:00 till 4:00 p.m. at the Gale Centre. Be free public skating, free face painting, inflatables, games, snacks, refreshments. We want to send our big thank you to Sobies, to our Rec and Culture staff for working this together so that the community can benefit from their victory of winning the craft contest. Charlie Van der Sluus, who's a professional photographer, is offering free business portraits for anyone looking for a job. If you're unemployed, and you can show him that, at his place on Lundys Lane, 7973, between 9:00 and 5:00 daily, there's no appointment necessary, you can go to Van der Sluus Photography, and he will give you a complimentary photograph to help you land a job. Very nice, very nice option.
We sent him a letter of thanks, your worship.
Yes, and we will send a letter of thanks. Moved by Counselor Pierangelo, seconded by Counselor Cario. All those in favor of a letter of thanks? Yes, we'll make it official, it's unanimous. And lastly, just a reminder to the public, anyone watching City Council, it's Tuesdays, and it starts at 5:00 p.m. We just want everyone to know so they tune in. We do have people that call and ask, what happened, why did I miss part of the meeting? It's because we started 5:00 p.m. We want everyone in the public to know that. So that ends the mayor's announcements. Moving on to communications and comments?
Communications?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, just before we move on, I'll apologize to my fellow counselors, but I, on the consent agenda, there is one that I'd like to at least speak on. It's RC 21315. It's the Arts and Culture Wall of Fame, the 2013 inductees. I wanted to congratulate all the inductees, but there's, there's one at the, at the back that I know has, and I know, Jim, you're fully aware of this, with the Niagara concerts. I know you go with your, with your wife and the kids and watch Niagara concerts. And last year, surprising to me, it's the first time since I got on council that I saw empty seats. And I know they had radio announcements on CKTB to try to get more season tickets there. So I'd like to say that, you know, Niagara concerts do an incredible job, the volunteers work extremely hard, and if you're looking for a birthday present for the mayor, Jim Diodati, my understanding is birthday was a few days ago, or for Christmas, there is nothing better than going to Niagara concerts. The entertainment is second to none. They work extremely hard, so I wanted to acknowledge, one, congratulate them on, on getting to the, the wall, but also maybe do a little plug for them for season tickets, because I know they've been in the community a long, long time, and they need a little boost this year.
That's a great point, Counselor Gates, and absolutely great point. If there's anyone that you're not sure, you want to buy them a present for their, for Christmas or for birthday, it's 100 bucks, that includes all five shows throughout the season, and it's a great theater, the acoustics and the seats are those nice old cushiony, springy seats, very, very comfortable, it's a great place to go see a show, and you're right. There have been a few empty seats, typically they sell out every season, for 100 bucks for a whole season, you can't, you can't be, the entertainment is amazing, they bring in dancers from Cuba, fiddlers from out east, they bring in guitarists from, from Europe, they, they, it's a real spectacular show, it's great value to go see that show. So great point for that. Okay, so communications and, I'm sorry, yeah, communications and comments of the city clerk. So we do have communications, was there a motion that I hear?
Karen made a motion.
Who did? Karen? Okay, Counselor Anoni made a motion, seconded by Counselor Pierangelo.
To approve one to five.
To approve communications and comments of the city clerk, one to five. Okay, so we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved?
I'd like to talk on.
On, on number four?
Yeah.
Stanford Center Volunteer Firefighters Association, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, this is another organization that does incredible work, but in August, I attended their fundraiser. And the fact that they're fundraising in the middle of the summer, the, the club needs, needs our help. You know, I, I, and I know I've said this at council a few times, but every day I drive down the highway to go to, to work, and I see what's going on at Optimus Park with tearing up that, you know, the heart of, the heart of the, the community, quite frankly, that park. I played slow pitch there, I umpire it there. And I think that the council itself, the city, we should make sure that Fireman Park stays Fireman Park. We don't want to see the same thing happen to Fireman Park that happened to the Optimus. And I know that, I make, I guess I can make it as a motion, I would like to see the city get with the volunteer firefighters and find out what we can do to try and help them. That park is absolutely incredible, I did a 5K walk for fundraiser there a few weeks ago. They need our help. I, I'm not saying they're crying out for our help, but I, I know that they, they're struggling financially. So I think, I think we've got an obligation to, to keep that Fireman's Park going, see if we can work with them, find out what we can do. I know one of the things that they love to have at that end, they love to have their own splash pad. I know they've, you know, the council talked about that long before I got here. But anyways, I, I'd like to put maybe a motion forward that you meet with them, see what we can do to help them out, to, to make sure that park stays here for years and years to come, for everybody to enjoy.
Okay, moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Pierangelo. Counselor Pierangelo, you want to speak to that?
I did, your worship, and, and the only thing I wanted to say is, I mean, I support it, obviously. It's the same motion that I brought forward last year when I asked our CAO, Mr. Todd, to get in touch with the SCVFA. I know that he has been in touch with the SCVFA, worship, and I know he's had some, some ongoing meetings with him about how he can help them with their financial situation. I mean, it would be my hope as well, you know, that we can help them out. So, I mean, I'll definitely support the motion, but I, I believe that there are already meetings with Mr. Todd.
Yeah, okay. So regardless, definitely want to reaffirm our support of, of the group, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's done, thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration? Okay, next up, we have Ms. Tina Kint. She's CEO of the Alzheimer Society of the Niagara Region, and she's going to inform council of what she's up to in regard to a coffee break event.
Can I just move this? Rearrange the place?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Diodati, members of council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Tina Kint, and I am the CEO of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region and Foundation, and I'd like to thank you so much for allowing me to speak about our annual Coffee Break campaign. This concept was initiated by our own Niagara Alzheimer chapter and has evolved into a nationwide annual fundraiser for societies across Canada that's raised millions of dollars. National Coffee Break this year is Thursday, September the 19th, with more than 10,000 coffee breaks expected to take place across the country. Locally, our campaign will kick off that day but runs until December. An annual, or an Alzheimer Coffee Break is a time to invite your, your coworkers, your clients, your family, your neighbors, all to come enjoy a cup of coffee or another beverage and give a donation to the Alzheimer Society. All the funds are raised, stay here in Niagara to support our programs and services to improve the quality of life for individuals and their families with Alzheimer disease and other dementias. Hosting a coffee break can be very fun, social, and very easy to organize. Our society supplies you with a kit, the host supplies the people in the venue. Each coffee kit includes a cup of, a pot of coffee, a donation box, and signature signs and literature. While many coffee breaks will be hosted on the national day, you can certainly choose a date that is more convenient to you. Our campaign will run until December. Coffee break events are held in homes, workplaces, community centers, churches, anywhere that a coffee pot can be put on, and donations are collected. Some of the most successful events in the past have evolved from something very creative, whether it's an open house, a barbecue, a raffle, dress-down days, selling coffee cup decals, or rounding up at a cash register. Each break truly makes a difference to the lives of those in our community affected with this devastating illness. This year's honorary chair is Sue Blaine with Rexall Pharma Plus in Beamsville. Sue and her team will kick off the campaign on Thursday, September the 19th, at their store on Ontario Street at 11:00 a.m. A couple region-wide initiatives that are worth mentioning are the Bulk Barn Stores are asking donations for a coffee cup decal at their registers that start at September 6th and will run till September 21st. On November 20th, 20 Avondale stores throughout the region will donate 20% of their coffee sales for that day. Why is our campaign so important to us? Because dementia is not the normal part of aging. Dementia is a degenerative and progressive disease that affects 747,000 Canadians today, for which there is no known cure or effective means to delay its progression. Within the next two decades, dementia will affect 1.4 million Canadians. And here in Niagara, we have a huge challenge. We have one of the highest percentages of seniors per capita, and yet we lack the available geriatric resources compared to other communities. There are over 8,500 people in Niagara who are experiencing a progressive dementia. There are over 8,500 people in Niagara who are experiencing a progressive dementia, and those numbers are going to grow. Significant challenges are faced by those individuals, their families, and those who care for them through that progression. As a recognized leader in the field of dementia care, our mission is to advocate for people with dementia, their care partners, and provide access to a diverse range of appropriate resources and supports along the continuum of care. Dementia does not define a person. People with dementia can still do things. They have abilities and strengths that deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Taking advantage of support and information early in the disease process has a positive effect on the quality of life with dementia, people with dementia, and their care partners. And ultimately, that will decrease the cost of health-based resources. Each year, our society fundraises for $600,000 of a $1.9 million budget. Coffee Break is our signature event. Last year, we raised over $100,000. And this year, we want to count on everyone's support to reach our goal of $105,000. Whether you host a coffee break in your home, or in a workplace, or as part of a social group, or social activity, you are committed to individuals and family here in Niagara, your neighbors, those who need your support. I encourage all of you to host your own coffee break and make your coffee count. You can simply register for a coffee break kit by calling the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region, 905-687-3914, or visit our website at alzheimerniagara.ca. Last evening, Mayor of St. Catherine's, Brian McMullin, issued a nation, or a region-wide, wish it was nation, challenge to all city halls in the Niagara to participate in this campaign. The city that raises the most funds during their coffee break will have bragging rights for our 2013 campaign. So I hope we can count on this council's support to participate. So I thank you so much for your time this evening. I don't know if you have any more questions about our coffee break campaign, but I do have your kit.
Thank you, Tina. And as in the past, we are definitely gonna participate. As a matter of fact, we've already started reaching out to the different departments in the city. So we'll be a little more proactive this year. We're gonna take a little bit of a different approach to how we do it, so it'll be more efficient. And hopefully, that'll lead to more, more dollars as well. So definitely count on the city Niagara Falls support.
Perfect. Can I present you, I guess tomorrow?
Kit?
Yes.
Just jump over the, you send that to Joyce, that's good, that's good. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Kint? All right, saying none. We will email out to everybody when we're doing our coffee break day. And anyone that wants to come out and have a coffee and contribute, they'll be more than welcome. So we'll make sure we'll share that with everybody that works at the city.
Thank you. And let us know, and we'll come down, too.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much, Tina. Thank you. Thanks, Joyce. New business, new business. What's that? Oh, wait, bylaws, I'm sorry. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio, to give the bylaws first reading. All those in favor? Okay, it's passed.
Bylaws 2013-134 to 213-142, we're at a first time.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo to do a second and third read. Seconded by Counsel Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved unanimously.
Bylaws 2013-134 to 2013-142, we're at a second and third time.
Thank you, Mr. Birthday Boy. Do we have some new business? Counsel Morocco, Counsel Carrio?
Yes, Your Worship. I'll make this quick. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out. October 4th is a fundraiser, and it's Oso Fab pajama party. I'm sorry, it's only for women, and you have to be 19 over, so you won't be allowed to go unless you're slipping in the back door for a special guest, knowing you. Anyway, the tickets are $75, and the proceeds go to D'Avola Hospice. So it's a great cause. So I'm hoping that we can pass that on to-
What's the date of that again?
It's, no, October, October. It's Friday, October the 4th. And it'll be at White Oaks in Niagara Lake. So, and on a second note, I'd just like to wish my husband a birthday, happy birthday for tomorrow, which also is your daughter's birthday, Olivia. It's tomorrow, so I want you to share the same birthday. So wish them a happy birthday.
Oh, good. Happy birthday, John.
Four weeks, the whole family. So you know what that means. What's a year. Leave it at that?
It also means it's time. Okay, we've got next Counsel, Counsel Carrio.
Thank you, Worship. Happy birthday. I know it was your birthday the last couple of days as well.
Yes.
Worship, I'm a little bit disappointed in this evening's meeting. It's the first time my daughter Carly's tuned in to watch a council meeting, and I told her that it would be exciting, they'd be screaming, they'd be hollering, they'd be fighting. I don't think I can explain how they-
Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo.
Worship, I just had a quick question. The OBA champions, the double A team, were you gonna bring them in automatically, or did you need a motion?
Well, yeah, we, they already had let us know, because they've won, that's, yeah, four in a row. Four provincial titles in a row, same team, which is, as far as we know, it's never ever happened in the city of Niagara Falls. We don't even know if three happened. We know four didn't happen, and we think five is the most ever in the history of the province. So yes, well, they've reached out to us. Have they reached out to you, Mr. Clerk, yet?
Through the rec department.
Through the rec department. Oh, they have. Okay, yes.
So you don't need a motion, Your Worship?
We don't need one. It's in the works. But thank you for that. Appreciate that. And yes, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, good things happen very slowly. But I was really pleased to see in the paper the other day, South Niagara Highway proposed.
Yeah.
And they're finally dumping the Mid Peninsula Corridor. That's only, what, 18 years we've been suggesting that wasn't appropriate. And what they're suggesting is, what the resolutions that came out of this council, two additional lanes on the Queen E, four lanes each way, the GO train, and the extension of the 406. So, great plan, something that this council has suggested and supported since day one, since they suggested a Mid Peninsula Corridor. So they'll probably be discussing this at the region. And I'd just like to say, we have a motion from this council suggesting this plan is exactly what we'd like to see happen. And it says that the Mid Peninsula Corridor situation is dead. So I would so move.
Okay, moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, that's passed unanimously.
And I was asked to bring to your attention, there's been a couple of serious accidents at the corner of Lundys Lane and Garner Road, which is a regional responsibility. Very busy area. And the people in the area were suggesting or asking if there could be a study to determine if in fact a light should be there just before the bend to slow people down, because it's a very dangerous area. And it's been brought to their attention again by a serious accident. So I would move that we refer that to the region and ask them to have a look at it.
Okay, moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Morocco. Yes?
Yeah, and I just have to say, there's, there's no doubt. I've actually been out that way a few times, and I have to say, Counsel Thompson, you're right. It winds up sometimes on Garner, trying to get across there. It is just unbelievable, with that new subdivision back in there in Garner Estates, the number of houses and the people that are waiting, they've actually said, that's just ridiculous, the time of wait. And they're just thinking that something devastating is gonna happen. And I didn't realize there's already been a couple of accidents. So I think we definitely need to move on that sooner than later. So I definitely support that.
Okay, we've got the motion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and we'll get that done. That's passed unanimously. Pardon me? Yeah, is there any other new business? Oh, Counsel Gates?
Yeah, I got, actually, I'm not sure if it's new or old, but on the Niagara Falls Arena, the site management, I've asked for a number of things. The deficiency report, the bogus report during the project, the warranty, how long the money was held back, and how long health and safety reports, how much David Tran was paid for the project, how much David Tran was paid for the bus terminal. And I still haven't received that stuff, and it's been probably close to a couple months. And I think it's fair to bring it back up again and say that I'm a sure request man. Maybe, maybe somebody missed it or whatever. But I thought it'd be fair to bring it back up. But I'd like to get those and certainly see if my fellow counselors would like them. That'd be great, too. I think it's a fair request. I might get out.
Sure.
Yep. We've pretty well got it all together. We're just, we're just compiling it. Some of it is huge material. We're just trying to figure out a way to do that. So I would think within the next, next week or two, we'll be able to have that. But it might mean that you might have to come in and view material, because it's almost too big to copy.
That's all right. No, but I think if people want to look at it, I think they can look at it. If they choose not to look at it, that's, that's fair, too. And the other thing is that I know we have a report coming, forthcoming to the Gale Center, but could staff just give us an update on where we are at the Gale Center? I think that would be also a fair request, please.
What's that? Mr. Holman, did you, oh, Mr. Ms. Moldenhauer, I'm sorry. If you can give us a little bit of, just woke you up, eh, Mr. Holman?
The company that's been completing the work of the Gale Center will be done this week. They're just waiting for a few parts to come in, and then it will be completed. And we will be reporting, of course, back later this fall to council, just with the final cost. But we've been quite pleased with the progress, and they've stayed on the timelines.
Okay, is there any other new business? Okay, I'll take that motion for adjournment. Counsel Iannone, seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor? We're done. Record time. Thank you.